John, will you lead us in our invocation tonight?
Dear Father, Lord, we ask you to be present here during our meeting, Lord, and just be with each and everybody here, Lord, and just be with us as we make decisions for the city, Lord. Just keep a hedge of protection around each and everybody, Lord, as they leave here. In things we ask in your holy precious name, amen.
Samantha, will you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, and the United States of America, and consider republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll go ahead and convene our meeting. Before we get started, I would like to say thank you for everybody showing up tonight. We do this every second Tuesday of the month. This year, or this week, or this month, we're on the third Tuesday. But I want everybody to know, we'll be here the second Tuesday of next month, and I would appreciate you guys showing up for that meeting, too, because we welcome your comments, your thoughts. This council, we're starved for comments from the city, and we don't usually get a crowd like this, so we're excited to see you. All right, we'll go ahead and get started with the meeting. We'll start with the roll call. Misty Cottle.
Here.
Jeff Upton.
Here.
Jan Throgmorden.
Yes.
Marty Lindelberry.
Here.
John Collins.
Here.
Dana McKnight.
Here.
Don Rollins is in Illinois tonight. Anthony Foster, our city attorney and our city clerk, are both present. Okay? So we'll start with the adoption of our agenda. I do have a couple of amendments to add to that. We'll add them to new business item five and six. One is a funding discussion for the Rock Creek Bridge that's coming up, and item six will be a funding discussion for Pleasant Street waterline replacement. Other than that, do we have any... Do I make a motion to adopt any of the changes?
Second and second.
We have a motion and second to adopt the agenda with the changes. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. That motion carries. Next, the approval of our meeting minutes for March 11th. Do we have any changes that need to be made there, or motions?
I make a motion that we pass the minutes as well, as second.
We have a motion and second. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. That motion carries. Next is our public forum, where we welcome the public to come up and ask questions or make comments to the council. This is not the time to come up and speak if you're here to discuss the Verizon contract and the cell tower. We will give you ample time for that when we get to it. Other than that, does anyone have comments for the council tonight during the public Yes, ma'am. Tell us who you are.
Hi. I'm Peggy Maringer from West Fork. And, you know, the West Fork Farmers Market meets every Saturday right out there. There are no bathrooms for the vendors, nowhere they can wash their paintings, so I wanted to see if it'd be possible to open the back door and keep all the other doors locked, but let the public and the vendors use the restrooms on Saturday mornings.
And I think that's been discussed before, Ms. Maringer, and there's some complications with that. So I don't think we'll be able to, is the short answer. I agree that's an issue, has been for years. Anyone else? All right, we'll move into our business reports. Planning Commission, is Walter here tonight?
He just texted me what he would like for the council to hear.
Okay, would you come up and give it to us?
Hi, Grace Morales, part of Planning Commission. We approved a lot split at our last meeting that had been previously tabled, and we heard a complaint about how we were ready. And that was our meeting in March.
Okay. Any questions for Grace about the Planning Commission?
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Next, our court report. Tracy?
Hello. I... Our first ones were up just a little bit from last month, and they're down just a little bit from last year. Seems like tickets are picking up a little bit. I'm hopeful that they are. Not that I want people to be in trouble, but anyway. We've just been working on collection scanning, that sort of thing, just trying to catch everything up, going through reports and stuff, hoping that if they ever get that court management system that's statewide free, we'll be ready and not take all of our mistakes and baggage from the last transfer over. So, that's all.
Very good. Any questions for Tracy?
Oh, another thing. I got my jail ATM set up, so I can email people that are incarcerated now, which is a really nice thing, because they don't miss court, because you can say, hey, you've got court coming up, you can tell what's going on. Both have been kind of a nice thing, except one guy told me he loved me today. So I did not reply to that, but anyway. It's, I don't know, it's our technology, we've advanced a little bit, and I'm excited that we have that feature now. Just with Washington County, Benton County turned us down.
Okay.
Better than that.
Thank you, Tracy.
Thank you.
Next, our library report. Marie?
Hello. All right, so I'm excited to say that we had some great turnouts at the library last month. Other things, you can see that our Storytime members are still high, and we've got some really exciting programs coming up. So tomorrow, we actually have someone who is from Sweet Freedom Cheese, who's a professional cheesemaker, coming to the library, and she's going to show us all how to make cheese and answer questions. There will be some hands-on stuff, but we don't know how many people are going to come, and so some of it will be demo, and a few things will be hands-on.
What time is that?
It is at 3:30.
We see.
Yep, and I think the calendar is also included in your packet, so you...
Yeah.
It should be on there. We also have bingo. One of our community members has offered to put on a bingo, and so she's doing it this month and hopefully next month as well, and maybe it'll turn into a monthly thing. And that is going to be on the 18th at 4:00 PM. We are also going to have a transplanting workshop slash just community gathering to transplant some plants. There will be a raffle at the end for Butterfly Gardens, and you can find more information on that on Facebook, but it will be from 9:30 to 2:00. Next month, we've got a whole lot going on. Like the first Thursday, we've got Medicare, someone who was going to come and talk about Medicare and just things to understand about Medicare around 2:15, just whenever book club is over. So we tend to put it at 2:00, but sometimes we just want to give people a little bit of time for room exchange. So after that, the Schmending Center will be back as well for their dementia support group. So I'm really excited about that. And we also have a possibly one-off possibility, something that will go on, which will be another book club meeting on Wednesday, the 14th, at 5:00 PM, and it's called Fiction Foodies, and the book is going to be something about Darjeeling tea. So pretty excited about that. Also, in May, Brad Pitts is going to bring his wonderful dog, T9 Raider, and read books to our Storytime crew, so we're really excited about that.
Who's going to win, Raider or Brad?
Both. He might have some competition with the kids with Raiders, because it's not so very popular, but we're really excited, and we've got a really cool book that is about a real T9 police dog.
Very cool. Any questions for Marie?
She's always so up to date.
Oh, I know. She's excited.
Okay. Thank you, Marie.
Thank you.
Next, Police Department, Chief Halliburton.
Good evening. All right, for last month, we had, we took 24 reports, we issued 32 citations, did about 48 warnings, had three city ordinance violations, we served 25 arrests, had two felony arrests, and one misdemeanor arrest. And that's it for as far as statistics. We did fill out vacancy with a new officer, Officer Ryan Brown. He's a 21-year police officer veteran. He's got some pretty impressive resume, a lot of training and instructor courses under his belt, so we look forward to him being an asset to our police department. Also, just want to mention about, while we have this large audience, about our West Fork Police Department Facebook page. We do, like during the flood, we do ongoing broadcasts about what's going on in the community as far as trying to keep everybody safe, and also you've probably seen our winter editions, where Officer Pitts and Sergeant Goggins were using here on the day shift time, and much more photogenic than myself, so allow them to do that. And if you're not friends with us on Facebook, I would hope that you would do that, so you can get the latest information when it's coming out, so we can do our best to keep them informed.
Any questions for Chief? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Public Works, Isaac.
We did replace about 350 feet of sewer line behind ESMR, got that completed, where we had multiple backups there. Homestead is, of course, the sewer is in, the new contractor there is there taking the pump, little pump and tanks out and filling in the old collection tanks. That's moving along fairly well. We're about one week on, one week off. I did catch wind that there's a change order coming for that, to the tune of about $22,000 for fencing, that I'm going to balk on. I think tearing fencing out and putting it back should have been in their scope of work on the run-in, so we're going to balk on that a little bit. 170 Bridge is moving along, still at merchant net speed, just about. We have a engineering agreement that SP signed and turned back into RDOT. They're trying to kick out some 90% plans. There was a minor little right-of-way adjustment that they shot out a week or so back, but yeah, that's kind of quick. Zach and I have been working on that a lot, and trying to work on the plans and specs, for our water insurance specs, to, because all that'll have to go through the Health Department, just like Pleasant Street waterline did, so... And then, of course, we get the flood, so then our list of stuff gets even longer. We're in the process of trying to get Back Creek Road repaired. It's one lane up now. We pour concrete on both sides now, probably 30 feet out from the bridge where it's undermining the asphalt. Hopefully, we don't have to do it again. We'll probably open that side up and then pour the other side, probably next week. Riverwood Bridge, it undermined all of that due to one of the tiles being broke. We've got two tiles to replace the bad ones, so we'll be digging that up and repairing that soon, so... And then the countless numbers of culverts on dogwood that we need to replace and or clean out, so, yeah, just make a list and try to knock them out as I get to them. I do want to report that I've been working with the contractor that's most likely going to do all the utility and site work at cottages at River Bend. They're hoping to break ground on that probably in a month, so they'll start working on some off-site improvements and putting utilities in, so that's coming. They're four locks from having Pleasant Street full, so, yeah, they're looking for another place. Other than that, any questions for them? Sure that somebody does. No?
Well, just out of curiosity, somebody posted with the flag, like some backflow they were getting in their home. Is that a city thing, or?
It is, and that is a nationwide thing. No sewer is watertight, so when I was reporting that manhole, and we have a manhole overflowing on Pleasant that we reported, I report those to Fayetteville now, since we don't have a permit, I was talking to a lady in Fayetteville, they had like 17 manholes overflowing, so when it comes hard and fast like that, everybody backs up, so it's not anything but I and I that causes that. It went up really fast, I think within an hour, within an hour, we got a call that they were backing up there, and by Saturday at noon, it was over, so it went on down that fast. We're actually working with that gentleman, well, not that gentleman, but the gentleman that owns those properties, trying to review that, so, well, I think we can come up with a solution, so.
And just to be fair, we had reached out to that gentleman prior to this.
We had. This has been a long, long problem for years, that they kind of said, oh, that manhole gets surcharged, because it does kind of bottleneck where it goes underneath the river, so everything slows down there, so it surcharges back up to Dog, and it backs up there constantly, so it's not the first time. But when we put these check valves in, it'll be the last time, so... But, yeah, we are working through that. Now, I can't speak for the manhole. The manhole will probably still overflow in high-risk events, but it won't back up in their house, so...
So how much of dogwood are you dealing?
All of it. We have, we're replacing a couple of tiles on Sycamore that were undersized, and of course, everybody has called with their ditches plugged up, and that's not really our responsibility, that's homeowners' responsibility to keep their ditches clean, but as we go down through there, we're trying to get the debris and the gravel that have filled in, so we could spend, I could spend six months up there cleaning out ditches, but we're going to try to blow through there and help who we can and fix our issues, so we're not flooding and flooding somebody's house, so...
There was a manhole in my yard, but I didn't check it to see if it flooded.
Yeah, and during that, Pleasant Street manhole hardly ever, I've never seen it back up. So I chased, I chased that water all the way back up to Sycamore, to the corner of Sycamore and Red Bud, and popped a manhole, and it sounded like a waterfall in there. I couldn't even see the manhole down the hill from it, from the water that was running. But when the water went down, I opened the manhole, like the whole side of the bottom's out, so it's just gushing water in it, so, other than that, we get a manhole replaced up there, too, so...
When you go up there, you won't just be in the past, trying to work this...
I'm not putting your gravel back on gravel.
Well, I just, I mean, okay, well, then, if you're going to say that, I just don't want you to come along and just scrape my ditch out and do like it has been in the past.
Well, yeah, I mean, we will clean the debris out the best we can and haul it off, so...
But if there's not any debris in it, you're not going to cut down into it?
No, no.
Okay.
No. Most of the time, it's just limbs that people have, don't know it's there, or have piled out there, and it takes one limb to hit the end of the culvert, and that catches every leaf that they dump through there, and then they back up, so...
But I do go back to Sycamore.
I heard, stay away from Marty's property.
No. Thank you.
Anything else for Isaac?
Thank you, Isaac.
You have some.
Thanks, Isaac.
We appreciate it.
Next, Parks Report, Director Harrison, how are you?
Good. So ball season's in full swing, so that's where we're spending the majority of our time, is a lot of work on ball fields and the ball facility, that's going well. Other than one flood event, weather's cooperated really well. We've, our high school season, we haven't had any rainouts, and we've been able to get lots of our practices in, and I know that's probably going to change, so, but as of now, it's off to a good start, and we've been able to accomplish a lot of the things that we want to get done by this time. Mowing season's a pointous as well, so we've been trying to work on that and stay on top of it, and then flooding caused some issues, and we've slowly been able to get some of that cleaned up. Finally, yesterday, was able to get some of the mountain of sand that landed on the sidewalk down Riverside, it's finally cleaned off, and some of the other debris. Did some work in our disc golf course with some trees and things that went down in there and created some issues, but overall, it was minor stuff for the flooding. Ball field held up really well. We played on it on Sunday morning, we played on it on Monday, so I was really impressed and proud of that, of that, because years past, that's not really the case. It's after 700 inches of rain, but, yeah, that's what we've been doing. So, that's all I've got at this point. If you want to see me, I'm at Carter Park, mostly.
Any questions for Chad? No? Thank you, sir. Looks like Isaac's catching the burn over tonight.
Yeah.
But we still have the fire chief. Chief Howard.
So, pre-flood, we were in a drought. We had a burn ban on for quite some time, caused quite a bit of issue. I don't know if anyone received any complaints about being ticketed for burning, but Washington County was very strict on that this year, which we appreciated, and it made our jobs a lot easier. For the month, we ran 123 calls, which is the most we've ever run, 33 of those being fires, so we've been extremely busy. But other than that, everything's going good.
We've been chasing this tail, it's been great.
Any questions for Chief Howard?
What is good intent calling?
So good intent means someone called 911 thinking there was an emergency, and it turned out to not necessarily be an emergency, where we go and serve the public in a way that's not an emergency badge.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Kristy, give us the financial report.
Wish everybody can, it's like the end of June. First quarter always looks bad. So our bank balances have decreased by $222,000 this year, and we are over budget by $200,000. If you look at that breakdown, just about every apartment's over budget. I would say 90% of that is because of expenses that we spend early that are heading the first of the year. Everybody's got money to spend on cars and all that, so they all buy them in the first of the year. We did finish the roof on this building, so that was a large expense. Chad's parking lot got paved down at Carter, so we had some really large expenses just this last week. Our sales tax numbers compared to this time last year were up 14.5% for the city and up 6 point, or sorry, 7.65% for the county. On the water side of things, our bank balances are up about $4,000, and are, we're under budget by $111,000. If you look down the sewer report down there, you can see that we are still doing much better this year than we were this time last year in our income versus expenses for sewer. It'll be interesting to see next month's bill with the larger rain that we had, to see kind of how that compares to our rainy season last year. In your financials, because it was the end of the quarter, I went through and underlined any expense line item that was over 30, or over 25%. As you can see, there are a lot of lines. Once again, most of those lines are just because we pay things heavy at the beginning of the year. There are a few lines, like the building maintenance, that may end up being over budget for the year, but hopefully we'll have other line items that'll, those'll offset with. We should know more by the middle of the year to see if we need to do some adjustments on those. Any questions?
No questions for Kristy?
Did you, the bill that was gaining momentum, the last time we met, we talked about that, about the county sales tax being held by the county, did that actually...
I had not heard a final result on that. Have you? I was gone some of this month, and so if they did it during that time, I didn't catch it, but I will try to find out some more information. I think legislative sessions are almost done. If they weren't done last week, they're close to done, so we should be able to get some updates on multiple things that were going on.
So Kristy, while we have a roomful of people tonight, let's go back to our sales tax numbers. You said that they're up 14%?
14%.
So, just to make everyone aware, in case you missed it on one of the websites or Facebook posts, West Fork is now able to order groceries from Walmart and have them delivered. And this is important, because in Arkansas, we're a point-of-delivery state, so wherever those groceries are delivered, that's who gets the sales tax dollars for it. So I push that upon all of you. If you are Walmart shoppers, please take advantage of having those delivered to your house, because when you do that, West Fork gets that sales tax dollar. It's just like we have a Walmart in town without having a Walmart in town.
And not just Walmart.
Not just Walmart, anyway. Anywhere that delivers.
Instacart will deliver from Aldi's and multiple other places, a lot of the food delivery people, the grow hubs and whoever else, a lot of those places are now delivering to West Fork, so Amazon purchases, basically anything you purchase online and have delivered to your house, West Fork gets that sales tax.
Yeah. So is it next month that we have the extra bond payment that hits the sewer?
May.
May?
Yes, May.
Okay. Anything else for Kristy? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item B, procedural motions. This is to clear the way for all ordinances on the agenda. Anyone like to make a motion for the procedural motion?
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
So we have a motion and second to read the ordinances by title only.
Yes.
And we'll do a roll call on that. Misty Cottle.
Yes.
Jeff Upton.
Yes.
Jan Throgmorden.
Yes.
Marty Lindelberry.
Yes.
John Collins.
Yes.
Dana McKnight.
Yes.
Anthony Foster.
Yes.
So that ordinance, or that motion passes, and so we're good to move on through the agenda. All right. All right, next, item C, old business. Now, I want to repeat that, old business, Verizon contract. So before we get into this, we've got a nice crowd tonight, I want to make sure that we take advantage of that. So on Facebook, someone was nice enough to put out that we would be discussing this tonight. They went on to say that you guys hadn't heard anything about this because of the non-disclosure agreement that the city had signed with the tower company. That's absolutely false. There is no such thing, that's against the law, and I say that because that kind of stuff aggravates me. When somebody goes to Facebook and makes this group that meet every month to represent you guys, they make them out to be a boogeyman, a bad person, some unknown group out to get you guys, it just aggravates me, because that's not the truth. These eight hearts up here, we're missing one of them, but they are truly here for the betterment of this city. They're here to discuss the issues that come before us, not to, not to come and do you harm, and so that kind of stuff aggravates me to no end. And we used to have somebody that did it almost weekly, and they haven't been doing it, but, so anyway, there is no NDA agreement, that's not why you guys haven't heard about this. This is actually eight years in the making, not quite eight, five, five and a half in the making, okay? So I want to be clear on that. So I want to be clear on that. Secondly, the city can't just say, "We're signing something that says, 'You can't sue.'" That's not the way the legal system works, all right? So, in this, it points out that us and the tower company have signed an agreement that nobody can sue us or them. That's as false as false gets, okay? So I'll leave it at that, as far as this Facebook post goes. But that kind of stuff aggravates me. If we're going to tell falsehoods and we're not going to come here and discuss facts, I get aggravated. Okay? So- It's on the agenda several times. So, and I'm going to go into that. This started back, I believe it was 2020, as we were going into COVID. When we started going into COVID, telecommunications companies started trying to put in extra towers to ensure that, that kids who were not going to school and were doing work from home had access to the internet. That's where all of this started. There was a tower put in down by Devil's Den. It was a rural tower put in temporarily to make sure kids had access to the internet. Verizon came to the city and said, "Hey, you guys have some dead spots in the city, we would like to put in a tower to make sure that there's internet." That's how this got started, in 2020. It was discussed at this council meeting in 2020. The council actually approved it in 2020. We weren't hiding anything, but nobody showed up for it. We discussed it and said, "Yeah, we're okay with that." The tower company, we didn't hear anything from them for about two years. Well, they came back to us and said, "Hey, we want to put that tower in." We said, "Okay, well, we're interested in it." We didn't hear anything from them. So they've came back a third time now, and they've said, "Hey, we want to put that tower in, that you guys, that we talked to you guys about." Well, at that point, I said, "You know what, we're aggravated with you. We should have had X number of thousands of dollars by now, if that's what you were going to do." So we've renegotiated the contract, that contract is before the city council for the third time tonight, okay? So I just want to be clear, we haven't tried to hide anything from you guys, we've openly discussed it. The city cannot enter into a non-disclosure agreement. All of that is, is available through FOIA, right? So I just want to make sure we're all on the same page when we come to discuss tonight. The next thing I want to talk about is, I've received, the council has received several emails discussing the health effects of cell towers. We've also received emails discussing the effects on pollinators, bees and butterflies. And I don't, I don't discourage anyone from looking into that or, or, or looking to that as an issue. What I want you to know is, tonight, we're not going to discuss those issues at the city council meeting. And the reason we're not going to do that is in 1996, the federal government passed a law, the Telecommunications Act of 1996, Section 704 specifically says that municipalities cannot deny a cell phone tower based on environmental or health issues. Now since 1996, and Bill Clinton signed that, this has been to the Supreme Court, it's been through multiple court proceedings, and it's still in place, okay? So we're not going to discuss tonight the health concerns. And, and I'm okay if you have them, I have them, right? That's fine, but we're not going to put the city in a, in a situation where we're going to get sued by a cell tower company, if that makes sense to everybody, okay? So anything else that you want to discuss tonight, I'm happy to discuss, but we're not going to discuss health effects or environmental effects of the tower. So with that being said, I know all of you came tonight to talk about this, and I want to make sure you have your time to discuss with us. So who would like to go first? Yes, ma'am?
I am Eileen Wilson, I am a graduate of West Fork, and I posted one of those, as a friend, as part of the community, trying to learn about this situation. I am new back at home after moving back from Texas in 2020 as well. So when I saw what I saw in minutes, I just did my business analyst autistic thing, if I don't have a picture of anything, I really can't speak about anything. And so just from my experience in those templates that I've developed over the years, I just pulled that data in, that is just for you, it's not something I'm really speaking on tonight. I had experience in developing the telecom industry as we know it now, in my early years in tech in Texas. And so when I saw the lease, regardless of how old it is, my biggest concern is the administrative cost, the money. So I'm going to speak to that rather than, you know, what it may do to help or not do to help, or the economic impact potentially of what happens after a power is moved in. So, tonight, I'm proposing something else, rather than a lease that could potentially cost more for Kristy to administer than what we receive a year. So telecom leases have hidden costs. Legal reviews permitting city administration and residents complaints often get up to $8,000 to $33,500 per year per site. A $10,000 lease can become a net loss. You know, if she's having to take calls or the city is having to take calls, say from everyone that comes into the room, then we're not doing the service to our city that we want to do. I'm proposing that we invest in community-generated revenue to try to offset some of what we're losing through some leases like this.
So do keep in mind, this was never about money. The city was never looking to lease this property for money. There, there is, if we're going to lease it, yes, we're going to collect money, but-
Right.
But this was never a money-making proposition for the city of West Fork. $9,000 is, is a drop in the bucket to the city budget.
And, and all I'm saying is, if we have to administrate that, how much is it actually going to cost to administrate it? Do we know the real cost to administrate it? And how will it help the city overall? Versus, I'm not saying not to do it, so I've come up here to talk about versus the lease. So if we compare it to a neighboring town like Eureka Springs, we add an additional festival to help generate community income, taking advantage of our side of the county that is very heavy with artisans and agriculture. So Eureka Springs draws about 5,000 people a year and generates a quarter of a million dollars a year from their butterfly festival, which is new. There's a momentum right now in butterflies, conservation, plant restoration, and I think West Fork is really well situated. After coming back, I see what, everyone's doing it, we just need to link arms and use a little of the time we're doing for our own groups to give some of that back to the city, and I think that would work. So the festival would have low overhead, and there are grants available through USDA and places like the Arkansas Pollinator Initiative. So we are, we have momentum in the state. We have the precedent-setting pollinator protection ordinance that we passed, there's the recent Monarch City USA designation, there's a new butterfly story guarding, we have the incoming bridge, so that's going to be added, road weight infrastructure, if we do have visitors come in touring out of the festival. But the benefit of visitors is they also leave, they don't stay here. So, a fall pollinator event, for instance, would have normal startup cost, it would be a great place for you to do Monarch City proclamation. We could add on in the next year a native plant horticulture sale, the Prince of the Library event itself has proven last three years that that is definitely an option in this area. And then eventually take it over to a fall fall festival. I know we can raise up to the money that that lease caused in West Fork a year, because the library butterfly club did it last year with almost no effort.
So Eileen, I want to-
Sure.
I want to stop you.
Sure.
I want you to tell me why you don't want the tower. I'm not, I don't want to discourage you from what you're saying, but you're taking us down a path that is something I think you should bring to the council on its own, as opposed to in discussion. I think there's a lot of people that want to talk about why they don't want the tower.
I'm just bringing this solution rather than coming with something that doesn't seem like they really want it.
Yeah, no, and I get that-
And that, that's why I'm here, actually, is how do we balance it out? So West Fork can acquire some of this community-generated income, but keep it balanced in a way that it doesn't allow big industry to come in, once they see a new tower in downtown, are we flagging other industries to say, "Okay, this is going to be another city where we're going to pressure them into making this another site where we have a lot more infrastructure industry, and not as much in-time stability for our residents who grew up here and graduated here, and the people who want the small-town community." Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. Yeah, and I don't want to discourage you from bringing this forward. I don't want to discourage you, I just, I just want to keep it-
Sure.
Yeah.
So, I would say that, well, I guess there's actually not much else I have to say. I just, my kind of thought.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
When I talk, so.
Any questions for Eileen?
Sounds like she's done a lot of research.
I think she has.
I'm available anytime with-
How to help.
Giving data to help the city, and basically that's what I'm here to say. And if we have a tower go up, I think it should pay for our administration. I don't think anyone should come in that shouldn't be able to pay for at least one employee's salary plus benefits, because it's undercutting our city over and over again, while it's driving down home value and community value. So, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am?
Can I come up?
Yes, tell us who you are.
I'm Bonnie Stitt, and I, you already read my letter, or some of you did, I got applause from some of you, so I'm not going to repeat, I'm trying not to repeat. But, and I'm really surprised to hear you say that it has nothing to do with money, because I thought, I did think it was not a very good price that we were charging, but I can't understand any other reason why we would have a big gigantic, ugly-
How tall was that big gigantic tower going to be?
Well, what I've read is that in a rural area, they tend to be taller.
How tall?
Anywhere from 150 feet to 300 feet is what I've read.
I was just wondering if you, if you had the facts.
Yes, and, and-
My mom's down in the hole anyway.
The fact that we're in a valley, I mean, why in the world would they put it in a valley unless they were getting a good price? So, anyway, I want to just go through what I came up to say. I read the lease agreement with Verizon, and I really hope you'll go against it in its current format. It seems like the way it's worded gives all rights to Verizon and very few rights to the city of West Fork. So for the next 25 years, it sounds to me like, from my reading of the lease, that Verizon can basically do whatever they want to on that piece of West Fork property, including subleasing it, and we have no right to terminate the lease, only they do. Plus, we can only charge $9,000 a year for the first five years, and then we can only go up to 10% after, after every additional five years, that's what I read. Meanwhile, if they want to, they can build an unsightly cell phone tower, which I assume communication means a cell phone tower, which I have read, real lower, research indicates that over 90% of home buyers are less interested in properties near cell towers. And I'm a homeowner who lives near the prospective cell tower, and I already hate it, because I don't want it in my line of sight. To me, it's ugly, and if it's that tall, it's going to need a flashy light because of FAA regulations. I don't want to see that, I want to see the stars, because I'm usually seeing my lookout west of my yard. So I think it's, I think it's ugly, I think it's going to discourage homeowners, and we don't want to do that. And I know you said not to talk about leases.
So don't, please, don't.
Well, but you have to realize that's something from 1996.
That's, that's outside of our control, I mean, that's a federal statute.
But it's not outside of our control whether we rent, whether we put it right in the town.
You're exactly right, that, that part's not.
Okay, so I want to say that I realize and recognize that cell phone towers and communication equipment is a necessary component of modern life. I'm not saying we shouldn't have any cell phone towers. But I believe there are places to put things like this, other than right in the heart of town. I have a lot of things in my own home, like electrical wiring and plumbing, and I don't want it to be behind the wall, or, you know, I don't want it out in plain view. And I feel the same way about industrial areas in cities. I think they should be sort of, you know, put in places that are not front and center. I don't think we need an industrial-looking cell phone tower to be the first thing people see when they drive into West Fork from the west. I think it's, I think it's a bad location. And I assumed that we were looking for ways to bring in more money, since we were willing to lease something right in the heart of town for this, and I thought that we might have a big town hall meeting and brainstorm ideas for helping West Fork bring in more revenue, because I've been hearing a lot of really interesting ideas, and I think our town is interested. I think we could pull together a town hall meeting and generate a lot of ideas about how we could make West Fork more lucrative, that doesn't involve selling ourselves short and selling out. I feel like we need to be careful that we don't allow ourselves to become a dumping ground for industrial eye source that our neighboring towns to the north don't want. And so they send them down here and think they can get a cheap deal in putting things in.
Okay. Any questions for Bonnie?
No.
So I just want to clarify, the reason I ask, it is, it's 150 feet, Isaac?
Yes.
So it's 150 feet tower that they've proposed, it's a single standing structure that essentially it's a light pole. There's no guy wires. I just want everybody to know what it is that's being proposed, because as with Bonnie, she's assuming one thing, I just want to make sure everybody knows what we're talking about.
Well, but in the contract, it doesn't specify, and it sounds pretty open in it. I mean, it sounds like it gives them a lot of power, and it also gives them a lot of power for the next 25 years. So they could change what they want, they could sublease, they could let other people go on to, or do whatever they want. So we're not going to have a whole lot of control if we sign the contract in its current format. Thank you all.
Thank you.
I appreciate all the work you do, and I'm sorry, it seems like I'm always coming up at the last minute late. I try to keep up, but it's hard to keep up with everything, so.
Thank you for your email, too, Bonnie, it was very respectfully and kindly written.
So, thank you, I really appreciate the hard work y'all do, and I know you're here month after month after month, and you too. So I'm not trying to diss anybody, I just find out about these things and think, "Oh no, I don't want to look out my back window at that." So, and other reasons too, so, thank you.
What is the reasoning for it?
Come on up, come on up.
My lander joins it.
Okay, what's your name?
James Wilks.
James Wilks. So what is-
It's not a big flashy light, yeah, I'll find a lawyer, we're going to have that. It's right there on my property.
So what is the reason for it? Why is the city considering it?
Why wouldn't it? It's suffering, why aren't we doing it?
That's a good question.
You can say no, you can say, "We don't have to worry about the health and all that." We can do, say, "No, you do."
That's right. So, great question, I'm glad you asked. Why are we considering it? Like I said, this started back during COVID, when they were trying to get internet access to kids that weren't in schools. That's where it started. On top of that, James, the city has digital meters, water meters located-
It's still working, by the way.
Huh?
I had a water leak and it didn't tell me that leak, so it's not working.
Okay.
5,000 gallons in two days, except.
So what we, one of the reasons the city was considering it is, we have some of those meters in the city that do not pick up the Verizon signal. We also, our water tower SCADA device that tells us if our water towers are overflowing or not, that was on Verizon at the time. And we, we had dead spots, we couldn't see it. So when Verizon came in and said, "Hey, you have dead spots in the city," we were like, "Yes, we do." So that was the city's, what was the city going to get out of it? The city was going to get some communications out of it that we were lacking. Guys, the city is not, not out there advertising, "We have land for lease for 9,000 a year." If, Bonnie, if there's groups of people that want to get together and brainstorm ways to bring industry or dollars into West Fork, that's great, but, but the city is not begging cell tower companies or anybody else to come in. If they're going to come in and use our space, well, yeah, they're going to pay for it, 100%, right? But, but the reason we were considering it, James, is because we do have dead spots, the city cell phones are Verizon. So while, Isaac's guys, there's spots in town Isaac can't get a hold of. So when Verizon specifically came in and said, "Hey, we're looking to put a tower down there to fix," we were like, "Okay, well, that makes sense to us." It had nothing to do with us trying to generate dollars.
Maybe they changed keyboards.
Sure, sure. Sure, sure. Are you a T-Mobile representative? Yes, sir, come up, tell us who you are.
I'm Steve Green, I live up on Merrill Mountain. First of all, I want to say how much I appreciate the way you chair a meeting. I've been going to Washington County meetings and they're a lot less collaborative and you run a really good meeting.
You're trying to butter me up for something?
I certainly am. My, my wife's a counselor and she counsels me. I really have to just have a question. The, if I'm understanding you this right, under the nineteen ninety-six law, Verizon can put in the tower in an area where they decide they want it, is that what I hear?
No, sir, no, sir, that's not at all. So, that law dictated that municipalities could not reject a tower based on health or environmental factors. We can reject it for any number of reasons. We can reject it because we don't like the contract. We can reject it because it doesn't fit in that area of town based on our zoning laws. All I'm simply saying is we can't reject it based on environmental and health issues.
Excellent, that's what I was listening for. So, you have a lot of control over where, if you decide that it's good for the town, you've got a lot of control over where it's located there.
We have control over is it gonna be located on city property on Campbell Loop, simply because the city owns that.
If you, this is a question, I'm not really challenging it. If, based on feedback and, and your own thoughts, you decide that that's not a good location and there's not a better candidate location on the city property, but we'd still like to have the benefit of the service, what would be the alternative there that we could look to? Where else could it be?
So, the city is not in, in the business of doing Verizon's bidding for them, right? If we decide it's not gonna be on city property, then we would simply tell Verizon that, that they need to look elsewhere. I think everyone needs to know that there's, there's other properties in town that if they decided to put it there due to zoning requirement or zoning, what's the word I'm trying to say? Due to the zoning we have, this tower could go on certain pieces of property and it would never become, it would never come before this council. They could put it in tomorrow and, and you and I would have no say in it. The only reason we have say in it tonight is because this is proposed on city property.
So, properties that are not city property, is that private property?
Yes.
So, that would be negotiated with the landlord?
Yes, yes.
And I'm just trying to ask you my own simple minded questions. And then the benefit of the service would again be available to people in West Fork. So, then what we want to have is a service and a lot of citizens don't want it to be near a school, which is a health related thing, we can't talk about that. But the city can decide not to lease that property for reasons of their, of your own.
Absolutely, we can, that's what we're here to discuss tonight.
So, there are solutions to this is what I'm kind of staggering toward here, that you have a lot of control over where it's located, as long as you don't use words like health or pollinators, you've got control at least over whether it's gonna be on Campbell Loop or other places.
We, we have control over whether it's gonna be on Campbell Loop, at the city property.
At the city property. So, there's a lot of ways for the people here to get on the same page with the people there here. I don't think we have an insoluble problem. I, I heard some pretty declarative remarks there that started this out, that made me think that we were at loggerheads and, and we're not. There's, there's solutions here. That's, I just wanted to get my own education here.
Absolutely.
And I wasn't just buttering you up. I've been in some pretty contentious county meetings though.
Yes, sir.
Hello, Bonnie.
Tell us who you are.
Sam Wyler.
Sam, nice to meet you.
Property that's right in front of the place they want to put the cell phone tower. I don't know. That was me. Is there any way we can get the image up, that was on that screen before this meeting started? It was like a blank screen, had the image of the circle of West Fork with the train on it. Oh, you have to back all the way out?
Anything for you to say?
I knew that image on purpose. It's actually a good image. And I think it's an image we'd like to see that people think of when they hear West Fork. And the thought of that image having a cell phone tower in the back of it, right behind that train blocking the view of the hill, would just ruin it. And it's not, I don't think it would be attractive for our community in any way. And we just don't want it here. It's not what we want people to see when they think of West Fork. That's a good image there, it should be huge. And that's what we want people to think of when they think of West Fork. We want them to think of a beautiful place. Our park down there by the river is fantastic. I see people down there from everywhere. Yesterday we had a pavilion that ran out by a group who is obviously nowhere from America, but they're already having a good time. It was fantastic, it's good to see and it's good to see that we have that drawl. That's what we want people to think of with our community. We want it to be beautiful. That tower will ruin it.
Okay.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hello again. So, we've kind of been touching on this a little bit with just, you mentioned that there are places in town that due to our zoning, a tower could go up, say, somebody has land, Verizon says I want to buy it, they could buy it, tower goes up and it never comes before the council. But the problem, I think, with this is that the planning commission just spent a lot of time working on and revising and redoing kind of from scratch Title fourteen and fifteen, which goes into what buildings can look like, what signs can look like, why we don't have billboards, how many trees need to be in front of each house as a subdivision. I mean, we went into every single detail. And the area where this tower is proposed has very specific guidelines for what buildings need to look like, that they fit in with the overall vibe. You know, the planning commission got a lot of heat, there's the, the meeting at the fire station, things that were proposed. You know, and we worked really hard to come to a really great solution to keep the vibe of West Fork, bring it forward, really, you know, be intentional with our choices. And you guys approved that. You looked at Title fourteen and fifteen and approved it. And so, I would assume that that means that you agree that downtown needs to look a certain way and I don't think this tower fits into what this council has already kind of said they would like for the downtown area as far as looks aesthetic. That, that's all I'm gonna say. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Tell us who you are.
I'm Martin Morales. And I can't believe I'm doing this right now, but just to reiterate what everyone else is saying, you kept mentioning there are different places that this tower can go. What indication has Verizon given you that this is the most effective way to achieve their goals?
They looked at, I think it was five sites in town, and so they, they came to the city first.
So, they, they didn't tell you why they think this specific location is the most effective way to achieve what they want to achieve?
I think what they told us when they came and Isaac, correct me if, if I get off track, but it was, we're down in the valley and there's, there's dead spots for Verizon and so they were trying to get a tower in the valley, down here in the valley somewhere, to fill those dead spots.
Okay, I probably should have researched this, but are there any other towers in the valley currently?
I think the other towers, the, the other tower in the valley is at the Greenland Ballfields.
In the valley proper?
In the valley proper, and then we have a tower up here on the hill, just west of town.
So, there's two towers and they're wanting to just put one in the middle, it sounds like.
That's what it sounds like. I'm, I'm not a, I'm not a tower or telecommunications expert.
It's just weird, it's just, yeah, to touch on, it's just weird putting towers in the valley, it kind of seems like it's counterproductive, but I, that's just really what I'm kind of.
Yeah, I don't know, that one's been in Greenland for fifteen years now, the ballpark, so, yeah, I don't know, that's just not my forte.
All right, that's all.
All right, thanks. Yes, ma'am.
Well, if I cry, don't mind me.
I'll give you some nap, or some tissue. Tell us who you are.
I'm Libby Wright, I live at three forty-four Philip Street and I have a long piece of property that borders where you're sitting, you're a man. And there's so many reasons that I can't say now, but I think it's a bad idea. But what about the homeowners? What happens to our property value, it goes down the tubes. And I've lived here forty-five years, I love this town and it will be a nice one. And I really think it's going against what everybody's trying to make this town like.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Where, where is, where is the information about the homeowners losing value coming from?
No, it's a good question, Jan.
I know, I mean, I just think of where it's coming from.
Well, if, you can find a study to support just about anything that you want it to support. There are definitely studies that say that, that it can decrease home values. There's also studies that say that it increases home values because people want to move into an area that has more telecommunications infrastructure. So.
I just wonder where the information, where everybody's getting their information on that.
Yeah, and then we can.
I mean, it's up to the.
I got a tower behind my house, so.
Who else would like to speak to the council?
Can I ask one more question?
Sure.
Do we get a lot of complaints that we don't have good internet and communication speeds? Is that, like, is that an active problem that people are complaining about?
Fair enough.
I'm just curious.
And, like, sorry, like, and another, it's like, I, because I know we came up with this during COVID and it's like, it's five years ago now at this point, like, do we still need it, even need it? Is it still even a necessary thing?
Fair enough. So, so Grace, no, we don't have a lot of people coming to the city telling us that they don't have cell service, which makes sense, right? We, we don't, we don't offer cell service, so we might not get those calls. Yes, this started during COVID, is it still an issue? I'm not the one, I'm not the one to answer that, I can tell you that yes, there are cars parked outside the library every evening, people using the wifi from the library, because I assume they don't have it at home. So, that's not for me to, to answer yes or no, it's just, I don't know.
Trends in businesses and other things, you know, all went to internet based things anyways, with it being the fact of communications with meetings, with trainings, with any things of that nature, they have all went, a majority of them have went online. So, yes, the need for internet access for people that don't have it to make, to make meetings, to do things with their businesses, to do things with their schools, to do things with day to day life now has become more intrinsic upon having internet access.
Yes, ma'am. Tell us who you are, tell us who you are.
I'm Laura Col, I'm Laura Davis, that's my husband, Kevin. I just want to know if it's just Verizon people.
Yes, this tower, to my knowledge, is just Verizon now.
Well, I've got great internet and great phone service, so I don't, you know.
Yeah.
I don't think we need it either.
Okay, fair enough. Yes, ma'am.
I have a question for Isaac.
Hang on, for Isaac, okay, go ahead.
You said that your associates have difficulty reaching you in certain areas?
Yeah, so like at our city shop, we have dead cell phones.
And how large of a dead area is that?
It seems to be right there at the shop.
Okay, so, if you walk outside, you have service?
Yeah, we'll say, we'll say drive down the road.
Building, got it, okay.
Okay.
No, I just want to say, I don't understand why they want to put, everybody's going back to work. My daughters are all at Walmart, they're calling everybody back.
That's, that's not for us.
No, but I'm just saying, he was saying we need it at home, we need it at home, it's not, companies are going back to work. They're not letting people work on my T U street.
That's not what I was.
Hang on, so Bonnie and James, we've already talked, I just want to make sure we give everybody an opportunity before we start. Anyone else that hasn't spoke yet? Yes, ma'am, tell us who you are.
I'm Kay Rosetti, I live at the corner of Maple and Main. Is it true that Verizon could lease that property and then sublease it to AT&amp;T and add more towers to that existing and?
So, my understanding, Kay, is no, they, they could not sublease the property, they could sublease space on that tower, yes. But, but as far as multiple towers, I do not believe that is allowed in the lease.
Just multiple dishes?
Multiple, multiple carriers on that tower.
Okay.
Hang on, Bonnie, I know, I know you're antsy over there, you can't wait. Who else would like to ask questions, other council that hasn't yet? No one? All right, Bonnie, wrap this up for us.
I just wanted to say, but, okay, Verizon is one company and there are a lot, there are going to be lots of internet companies and options. I have great internet and.
We're not asking everybody to go to one company, Bonnie, this is, this is not, this is not because it's one company. It's, this is one company in particular that's looking at a, at a, at an area that they lack.
I know, so it's for them, it's not for us.
No, it's for everybody in West Fork that has their service and, and you don't have it, but there are people in West Fork that have Verizon service.
I have to go with Verizon.
But. Okay, all right, so we're gonna wrap that up, we're gonna pull it back to the council and the council can discuss this and decide where we're gonna go. I think we've heard from everybody that, that wanted to, to speak tonight, I hope, I hope you, you've taken advantage of that. But we are gonna pull it to the council and let the council discuss and decide where we're gonna move this, what we're gonna do with it. We've got some options, we can, we can table it, we can, we can approve it, we can deny it, we can, we can amend it. So, where does the council want to go with the Verizon lease?
I'd like to say first of all, that with the, the lease is, I mean, a lot of different groups lease off of one tower. When you travel, you go from tower to tower to tower. But when you're home and you're using your internet, you can't use your TV half the time because of the internet, that's what people are talking about. All TVs have gone, you gotta have the internet to watch your TV, it's just the way it is. So, there's a lot of things like that that people are not even considering. And, and the homeschoolers and things like that, because there's a whole lot of stuff going on in West Fork that people just don't realize, I think.
I would like them to consider maybe a different location.
So, can I ask a question? Can I, I appreciate your input, Grace, about, you know, we, y'all did spend a huge amount of time on the ordinances and, and we did have a lot of things put in place to protect the way our city looks and, and the aesthetics and all of that. But then you said, and I know this is true, that they could go to somebody else that's not the city and try to potentially put in a tower. So, could you expound upon the part where you said there are some other places, like in town, that they could approach? Would they be in that same vicinity or would they potentially be? I forget how you worded it, but you said there, because of the zoning, there were some other places.
So, I'll, and, and don't give names, Isaac, but how many other sites were there that they were, they were looking at when they came to us with this?
So, they looked at just south of Riverside Park, here, right, right on the river. That was their actual first choice. They needed to be in proximity to population, because we pitched the idea of the sewer plant, because we knew it was far away, that was too far away, wasn't a benefit to them, so, so they wanted to be in town around population, so. that's where they could benefit more people. So, their, their first site was right, just right here across the tracks, south of, south of Riverside Park.
I don't know who I'm saying, but.
Yeah, we took them several different places. Carter Park was one of them, by the pavilion. They didn't like that location. So, they didn't want to go up the valleys because then they interfered with, the interstate has its own internet thoroughfare that bounces from tower to tower, like Jan's saying, they needed to be down here. FFA has its own thing, so they needed to be here in the valley. So it was, it was in this proximity right here, where we're.
Does that answer your question, Dina? And I was saying, in Fayetteville, so, I've been looking in Fayetteville, so about every corner in Fayetteville has a smaller tower, right? They're, they're more of a light pole-sized tower, they're about a fifty to sixty-foot tower, and they have them everywhere in Fayetteville. I think those, if I'm not mistaken, are the five G repeaters, but.
They also have them on the top of buildings and everywhere.
They are, they are.
And how many of them do you actually really look at and see as you're looking around?
You know Fayetteville's got that one by the fire station that they dress up like a tree. So, yeah, they, they are, they're, they're everywhere around.
Just a necessity at this point.
But yeah, I think, Dina, to, to your point, yes, it's, it's here because it's, it's a lease with the city and it's not a lease with someone of the general.
And money talks, and, you know, people can, if, if it goes to an individual, and they're interested in money, how many are they gonna allow on that property? If they, if somebody else comes in and wants to put something there, then, you know, money talks, y'all. I'm sorry, but it does, and not to us, that's not what we're talking about. But I'm saying, someone could put whatever there, then, to go with that. Where we can put some patrol on it, an individual might be out.
Do you what?
It could be in town, though.
It's a little.
A private citizen could say, hey, I'll take that. I'll, I'll take that, or whatever.
Right.
And we, but we couldn't prevent that?
Not necessarily, depending on where it's at.
Unless we want to make ordinance.
Hey, hey, hang on, you guys had your chance. Let the council have their discussion.
Yeah, so, to some degree, Marty, that's absolutely true. I think, and I don't know with, without looking at our zoning ordinance, but yes, there are probably areas in town where it could not go, based on zoning, but there are other areas in town that it absolutely could go based on zoning. And we wouldn't have, you know, we wouldn't have, we wouldn't have a discussion on it, it would simply be a, a contract between the landowner and Verizon. We're, we're having a public discussion because it's a city lease, and city leases are not subject to NDA disclosures, and, and they are public knowledge.
Am I overstepping to say that if Verizon is willing to pay the money to put a tower up, then that they have a significant amount of consumers here that they're wanting to provide service to?
That would be, that would be my thought, is, they're, they're here for a reason.
So there, there is, there is a significant enough of citizens in this area that have Verizon that is pushing Verizon to want to have a tower.
I, I think that's, that's a logical step, yes.
Yeah, no, forget about the city things that need them, you know, like I took skies with those meter things and all that, you know, I mean, there are things that are needed.
So, I'm not super, I'm not super stoked with the lease that we have. We've got a $2,000 signing agreement to allow them on city property. I don't have issues with, with some of the other language that's been brought up in the lease. I think, I think if you read enough leases, you, you recognize that a lot of this is standard information, this isn't a lease that Verizon built specifically for the city of West Fork, it's a template that they've put the city of West Fork's name on, and it has a lot of language that would be for a landowner, but I don't, I don't have a, an agenda that, oh, I want this tower, or I don't want this tower. I think it's more of a, an issue is, is the city, with the city's plan to use of that, that, that property down there, is, is that something that the city is comfortable leasing out for potentially twenty years? And is the city, is the city satisfied with, with the lease agreements that we've been offered? We obviously have public dissent on this, and, and I'm not picking on you guys when I say this, okay, so don't take it that way, I'm not picking on this group. But there, there is a, there's a, an acronym, it's called NIMBY, and it stands for not in my backyard. And, and what that, what I'm getting at with that is, anytime that something new comes in, whether it's a housing development or, or something else, we get that group of citizens to come in like you have tonight. If you notice, there's not many people of a valley view that's in here tonight, they don't care about you guys, is what it boils down to, right?
Jesus.
I'm, I'm not picking on you, I'm saying, I'm trying to make a joke, that, that we see that, we see the groups of people who are directly affected or, or directly near whatever is being proposed, and it, it doesn't matter if it's, if somebody was, was offering to plant a million-dollar flag in Charlie's front yard, there would be a group of people that came to the city council that opposed that. That's just the truth. So, what, what else do we have on the council? John, you've been quiet.
So what are we unhappy about with the, with the contract? We negotiated it after,
We did, we, we went back and negotiated. I'm still, so like I said, when we discussed this back in 2020, we didn't have any opposition to it, nobody grabbed it, threw it on Facebook with some salacious information. And so, the, the council pretty much was, was in agreeance that we wanted to do it. So, at that time, I think our thoughts were, yeah, that's, that's a piece of property that we could do it on, that's a fair price.
It was then, but it wasn't now, and we renegotiated.
We did, so when it came back this past time, we said, well, you know what, if we were gonna do it, we lost a lot of revenue to you guys, that, we already said yes to it, but now we've lost revenue, and, and from my perspective, is, has anything changed about that piece of property? So, in my view, yes, it has, to some degree, not that this is necessarily gonna affect what, what my future vision of that property is, but, but my vision for the property has changed. And, and I don't think it's fair to the city that, that they said they were gonna do something, they haven't, you know, they never did pay for what they said they were gonna do. So, again, it's not about the money, but if, if we're gonna give them ground, we should have an equitable take in that from them, right? If we're gonna lease up to somebody, they're, they're gonna pay for it. That's my only thing, as far as the lease goes.
So you're not happy with the amount of money that we did negotiate?
I think it's a, I think it's probably, in this area, the monthly amount is, is what we call around, that's, that's about what, what we're seeing. I think the $2,000 signing kind of, kind of sticks with me.
Yep.
I think the lease has got a lot of worthy things that go the other direction than ours. One thing is the same way it was, it's just a lot of lease for what it is.
So maybe we need to renegotiate it?
Maybe.
Do, is that, is that still the?
Or making more of our benefit?
Is that, is that still the intent of the council to, to move forward?
I intend to move forward.
I think we should look.
But it needs to be beneficial to the city.
Yes.
And the citizens, not just sign some big contract.
Yeah.
Put something on a piece of ground just to.
Right. Well, we need to, I think we need to look at it, I'd like to make a motion that we renegotiate, look at it and see, is it worth, and go through what the contract says that we're not happy with, and renegotiate those parts, before we can vote to absolutely do it. Cause we can't. If we don't go through it and renegotiate it, then seriously, figure apart.
Okay. Anything else? Misty?
Well, I was kind of wondering if we could almost take a poll of how many people actually don't have very good service for the internet?
No.
Like, I'm not saying us.
I have Verizon, okay?
Yeah.
I don't get cell phone service in my house, but I have Ozark over, I use wifi with my cell service to make calls. We don't have good cell service. I do have Verizon, but there's other ways around.
Cause like, when you were saying earlier, like, people were at the library after hours. Well, my thought is, is that because maybe they just don't want to buy internet service in their home.
Certainly could be.
So they're just using free wifi.
It could be, but we don't know that.
Right, but that's why I went to the thought of, like, you know, they could just be there because they don't want to pay for it.
Well, you have citizens that couldn't afford to pay for it.
Right, so this wouldn't help, this wouldn't help them.
Right, it's the hottest thing you gotta have in your house, really. I live in four year phone.
Yeah.
You know.
I don't know, I was just wondering, do we, are we?
If you're talking about the schools about them needing it and everything, and what the first part of it was to, to add to the children, I mean, there's, there's kids at the school that can't even pay for lunches, let alone internet.
Right, so this actually wouldn't be helping them, though? Because they're not going to be getting free wifi.
If they got a cell phone, they have access.
But, yeah, they have it if they have a cell phone, if they have access.
They can't pay for lunch, they probably don't.
Oh, they're gonna pay for themselves.
Okay, so let's do this, council, cause I, I think we're a little bit split, we've got, we've got some different points of view. So let's, let's first decide, does the city council want to move forward pursuing a renegotiated lease from the one that we have?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am?
Yes.
Little more discussion.
Okay.
Yeah.
If we ain't in it for the money at all, why do it?
Yeah, that's true.
Okay.
Yeah.
But they say it's gonna cost us administration, like she was talking about, it's something Christie, it's gonna fall on Christie.
No, no.
Cause if it's not, then, then it's not about the money.
Alright, so I got two yeses, one no. City attorney, do I need to make this official, if we're gonna?
I'd probably do it.
Okay, let's take a roll call. So whether or not the city's gonna pursue renegotiating this list, or this lease, I'm sorry. Misty?
Well, I just want to know, do the citizens need it or not, is what I'm wanting to know.
They're always subject to you, Misty.
But that's what I'm wanting to know, are we talking about five people out of three thousand and?
No.
Well, if it's, if it's.
Let's renegotiate.
If Verizon's want to put it here, it's worth their money to put it here, cause they have the, they have the clientele.
Right. But I think maybe they're, they could be just subleasing off, and then AT&amp;T's gonna have a, you know.
Hallelujah.
So let's, let's, let's move forward with a vote on this, whether or not we even want to consider renegotiating. Misty?
No.
Sorry, I'm on the side, sorry. Sorry, what was your vote?
Not at the moment, I'm gonna say no, unless the citizens.
Jeff Upton?
Yes. Speak up and say they need it.
Jan Throgmorn?
Yes.
Marty Lindebury?
I'm gonna say no.
John Collins?
No.
Dana McKnight?
Okay, I'm not trying to take the chicken way out of this, but I sincerely did not know that they were interested in the park, the property south of the park, and that's owned by McKnight people and relatives, and I don't think it's fair for me to vote because it could potentially affect whether or not my family members get a profit from it. Does that make sense?
Sure, so you want to abstain?
I sincerely, I want to abstain because I didn't know that.
No, fair enough.
I'm glad I asked.
Anthony Foster?
So are we voting on moving forward?
Are we voting on moving forward?
We're voting on whether or not the council wants to move forward and renegotiate the lease.
I want to do everything. I want to table it.
We'll get, we're, we're taking this vote first.
Alright, then yes.
So I've got three yeses, and three no's.
You get to vote now.
If I need to break the tie, I'll vote. But I, I just want to be transparent.
I'd rather talk about it longer.
What were you?
I mean, I know, obviously, you guys have had it since 2020. Now, whether, no matter how, who put it out there, whatever reason they put it out there, whether it was to stir the pot, or they actually really had a concern about it, and I've already seen it three times in the short stint that I've been here. And this is the first time I've ever seen any, first time since I've been here that I've seen any public interest in anything whatsoever. Most of the time, this is empty and it's just, there's nobody here.
Welcome to city council?
Yes. I, I was, I was starting to see that. So I think there's enough concern that we should probably talk about it a little bit more, and go whichever, and make a decision from there. Like I said, I haven't had a chance to talk about it all that much. I have not, I mean, it's just, it's here, nobody's interested, hey, this is something that we've wanted to do for a long time. I see the potential for the city. I see potential for more, for benefit from more people than what I see in here wanting to say no to. But I also want to hear from them as well, on what they want to say. So, I'm still up in the air for both sides of this.
Okay.
As far as, this is the first time I've ever seen any kind of interest in anything around here. Okay, that's what I wanted to do, is a motion to, to table this.
Okay, so we've got a motion that failed to, to renegotiate, now we have a motion to, to table the issue until next month.
Till next month.
Do we have a second on that?
I'll second it.
Okay. Misty Cottle?
No.
Jeff Upton?
Yes.
Jan Throgmorn?
Yes.
Marty Lindebury?
No.
Okay. John Collins?
No.
This could get exciting. Dana McKnight?
This is just whether or not we're gonna table it?
Yes, for further, for further discussion.
No.
Anthony Foster?
Yes.
Alright, so what do I have there?
Four to.
Four to.
Four no's, four yeses. Okay, so we will not table this issue. We will, we will look for other, well, what?
If we don't table it, we have to vote on it, don't we? Yes or no?
Unless there's another motion.
With no more information.
It's dead. It can always be brought up three months from now, something one's done, but it's dead.
We're gonna stay within the legalities, and we're gonna come up with a decision to either say no, yes.
So on the, on the tie, you don't vote? Well, tie earlier, how come you don't vote? Your tiebreaker?
That's right.
Mayor, I'm just, I'm just asking, I'm not trying to make this about me, but obviously, we have a tie. So, I mean, I have a vote, I just don't want anybody to think that it would be to benefit.
Then stay.
No, no, that's fine.
But I have a strong feeling that I don't want the appearance of helping me or any of our relatives.
Apparently, your relatives didn't want there.
No.
So I doubt if you go and build it.
So, let's not get into that, let's not get into that.
You know what I mean? I just want to be transparent, because I wouldn't want anybody to ever.
And I, I completely understand that, and Dana, yes, could I vote? I absolutely can, and you know where I'm gonna vote on this. I'm gonna vote to keep the discussion going. I, I am not gonna pull this away in a tie to try to, to banish something that, that we're not gonna talk about again. I don't care how many people show up, I want the discussion. These people don't like it, there may be people who like it, I don't care. I don't care if we get a tower or we don't, it's nine thousand dollars a year. That's, that's not helping me or the city in any way, right? So, don't take it that you need to vote to, to a, to, to help a tie. So let's.
So what other discussion topics, or what other amendments do we have to potentially address this Verizon contract?
Other amendments? As like more discussion about what this is?
Better change it.
We're not going to table it. We tried that. We're not, we did not vote to renegotiate the contract. So.
So to me, we shouldn't even be talking about it anymore.
No.
It's still on there. So make a motion to cancel.
We can make a motion to approve the contract, we can make a motion not to approve the contract.
I made a motion not to approve the contract.
Second.
We have a motion and second not to approve it.
Okay. So a motion to not approve.
To deny the contract.
To deny the contract.
All right, here we go. Misty?
I'm voting yes to not approve the contract.
That's a good explanation. Jeff?
Yes.
Jan?
No.
Yes.
John?
Yes.
You can still abstain if you want.
Um, yes, I'm voting to not.
Approve? That's like a double negative, I think. That's a John Collins grammar for you.
There you go.
Anthony Foster?
We could be here all night long discussing this over and over again. And obviously, we have a group of citizens here that do not want it, but at some point, we're going to have to do something around here to make this place grow, to keep it going. And I think this right here is a big step backwards from not being able to grow and be able to go on. I really didn't because this place is going to have to get bigger before we're going to be losing a lot of stuff. But I'm going to say yes to not vote.
Okay. So we have voted five to one to not move forward with the Verizon contract. There we go. No, 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 that's, this is what we want. This is government at work. It is not taking to Facebook with half truths, or might I say, lies. This was government. You should be proud of yourselves, whether you like the decision or not. No, ma'am. Sorry. All right. So, no, ma'am. New business. We have a contract with Aptology, Aptogy?
Aptogy.
For new city website and mobile app. You guys all have access to that contract? Citizens have access to that one as well? Do we have, there's no need to leave now, guys. We still have meeting to go.
We have to do two contracts in one night.
Apparently, this one doesn't matter. Okay.
That's the problem.
All right. So you guys have access to this contract? Is there any discussion on it? No? Do we have a motion?
Motion, we accept the contract. I don't know if that's the correct wording.
I'll second.
Motion and second to approve this contract with Aptogy. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no. That motion carries.
Sorry. Can we add a motion to that? Basically, we have funds in an Rvest account that are for, are purchasing card rebate that we have never allotted to use for anything. We've got approximately $12,000 in that account, so can we make a motion to use the money in that account for the setup of this?
I'll make that motion. Am I correct?
We have a motion and second to use those Rvest funds from the purchasing card account that we just collected there. We have a motion and second. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no. That motion carries. Second item of new business, I would like to recommend Melissa Moore to fill the vacant position on the planning commission.
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion and second. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no. That motion carries. Item three is ordinance 2025-532 to establish the position of fire marshal. And our city attorney will read that by title only.
An ordinance creating the position of fire marshal in the city of West Fork, Arkansas. Ordinance number 2025-532.
Motion approved. Second.
We have a motion and second to approve that position. This is an ordinance, so Misty Cottle?
Yes.
Jeff Upton?
Yes.
Jan Throgmorden?
Yes.
Marty Lindebury?
Yes.
John Collins?
Yes.
Dina McKnight?
Yes.
Don Rowland. Anthony Foster?
Yes.
That motion is approved. Item four, and I'll let the attorney.
Ordinance number 2025-533, an ordinance to rezone certain real property located in Washington County, parcel number 835-38402-001, from residential R to mixed-use commercial MU-C in the city of West Fork, Arkansas.
Where is that plan?
It's at Butterfield and 71. So just so everybody's aware of what we're doing here, this is a parcel that many years ago, we voted to rezone it to commercial. When the planning commission passed their new zoning ordinance, this parcel was inadvertently reverted back to residential. So the city did them a harm. We are basically making right or wrong that the city performed.
He was here earlier and left, but.
I don't know. Okay.
I'm pretty sure he came in.
All right. So we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
No, Jeff made the motion.
I'll second.
Misty Cottle?
Yes.
Jeff Upton?
Yes.
Jan Throgmorden?
Yes.
Marty Lindebury?
Yes.
John Collins?
Yes.
Dina McKnight?
Yes.
And Anthony Foster?
Yes.
That motion carries as well. Item five is one of the amended items we added to new business. It's bridge funding for the Rock Creek replacement of that bridge at the highway department where they're replacing the bridge at Rock Creek. They're also changing the right-of-way and the roadway right there around Rock Creek. The city has to move, Isaac talked about this last month, I think, the city has to move some of the utilities out of that. The estimated cost for doing so is $175,000. $65,000 of that is going to be refunded to us from the state. They're basically going to pay us back for moving that. Some of that utility doesn't qualify for state refund, but what we're approving here is using street reserves to fund that project. So basically tapping into the savings account for the street department.
I'll second.
We have a motion and second. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no. That motion carries. Item six under new business was, Isaac talked about this also, so looking to replace some water lines along Pleasant Street. Part of this is in conjunction with the bridge on 170 replacement. Estimated cost for this is $75,000. We are voting to approve our remaining ARPA funds in the amount of $36,000 that we've carried over for a couple of years, and the rest would come from water reserves.
That motion approved.
I'll second.
We have a motion and second to approve those projects. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no. That motion carries. Item E on the agenda is other business. Do we have any other business? Okay. We'll move into mayor's comments. So the mayor's comments this month are, I'm really disappointed in our library. I gave one of the best Ask the Mayor episodes only to find out.
No audio.
No audio.
Why you didn't call me on it while I was up there? That's hilarious.
So we are going to, we're going to do the next Ask the Mayor.
We're going to do it on the 24th because we're also having a field trip with the kindergarten, so the mayor has to say hi to all the kindergartners and then we'll go back and answer some questions. So also, everyone visiting tonight, the mayor also is available for questions. If you go to our library website, there's a place you can submit your questions anonymously, and once a month, he answers your questions. We have it on Facebook Live and then we repost it on YouTube, and usually, we have sound.
And so we don't do it live because I'm not smart enough to answer those questions without all of the great city staff feeding me answers prior to it. So just full disclosure there. You know, we were afraid some people would hijack it if we tried to do it live. But please, go ask your questions there. If you have any questions concerning the city, even if it's just, if you just want to quiz me on something, ask. Otherwise, it's been, it's been an exciting month. We've had the rain that we've had to deal with. Isaac's had several projects going. He's got some complaints for how he dealt with some of the rain. But we know Isaac is never letting grass grow under his feet. So anyway, real happy with the way the department's handled all of that, handling all of that, I guess I should say. I'm excited to see where TJ goes with the fire marshal. This is going to be something that's new to West Fork. It's going to be something good for West Fork, but it is going to be a change. I think it's important to note that Christie has all the department heads reviewing our salary caps that we have on positions in the city. So that's something that'll be coming before us as we come into budget season, mid-year. That's something that we've dedicated ourselves to reviewing on a periodical basis, and it's time. What else we have coming, Christie?
The website's going to be exciting. I'm really excited about that. It's going to have, the departments are going to have the ability to go in and update their own pages. Those pages will also be linked to any of their social media pages, so anything that they put on the website, they can put on social media also and vice versa. And then the mobile app is going to be more, because a lot of people are more likely to use the app than they are actually get on a computer and go to our website, so.
So I like to ask this anytime we've got a good group. How many of you are connected to our alert system? A few. So the city does have an alert system. We send out emails, Facebook. We try to let you know in every way we can, but I also want to make sure that if you're not on it, it's not something that we're pestering you with the latest city special. So we usually only utilize that if there's a water leak in your area that you need to be aware of, or if there's weather damage or something like that. So it's not something that you're getting an alert every day, every week. I haven't got one in months, but it is something that the city has that can give you alerts. This new website and app is going to give us greater ability to drill that down, so we can hit James, but not TJ with that, with those alerts, even though both of you are signed up for the same thing. So it's really going to give us a better ability to communicate, increase the transparency of the city as we move into that. Hang on, hang on, just a second. I think that's all I've got for city council. So let's take a motion to adjourn, and then we will take your.
If you get the website, update it.
That's why we're getting one.